I'd like to call this meeting of the Norco City Council and successor agencies to order, please. City Clerk, take the roll call, please.
Councilmember Newton.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Here.
Councilmember Grunmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Protem Bash.
Mayor Hannah.
Here.
Thank you all present.
We will now recess to closed session. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll reconvene the public session. The first action is a report of action taken in closed session by the city attorney.
Yes, the city council considered the matters listed on the closed session agenda, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you, sir. Now, join me in the pledge of allegiance by Mayor Protem Kevin Bash, and then followed by the invocation with Pastor Fred Griffith.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For everyone, just bow your head in reverence and honor of God and His presence here. Father, we pray, Father, for the mayor, Borwin, all the city council members, city planners, public works directors, city clerk, deputy manager, acting finance, senior director, police chief, fire chief, city attorney. Lord, I just hold these mighty men and women up before you now. You said in Proverbs, verse 3, verse 5, and 6, that we are not to lean on our own understanding, but acknowledge you in all our ways, and you would direct our paths. And I'm acknowledging you in the behalf of this great team of Norco, the great city that you have entrusted these members to be a part of. I ask you to bless them and give them wisdom. You said in your word in Proverbs 29:18, where there is no vision, the people will perish. The city council, the mayors, and all those who play an integral part in running this great city have a vision. So we ask you now just to bless them, add more business to the city, oh God, that it will be productive in more ways than they could ever imagine. Streams of revenue that will come into this city to do your work. I ask you this now in Jesus's name, amen.
I'll go down to the front and the EDAC Chair, Patrick Malone, will you join me there, please? Tonight, we're going to honor Jeffrey Court. Patrick, I'll let you start off there.
Megan, you want to come up on here, or actually, y'all three can come up if you'd like. And even Mike, and Scott, and it's just in time, I love it.
They was waiting out in the hall.
Yeah, they were. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Patrick Malone from the EDAC Economic Development Group. I'm here to assist Mayor Hannah in the presentation of this month's business appreciation, being presented to Jeffrey Court Tile. Thank you, guys, for coming. Jeffrey Court Tile was founded in 1991 by Jim and Janice Lawson, born to create impression across industry and homes and businesses across the country. Now, 28 years old, they have in-house designed quality products using a wide range of tile lines and materials that are thoughtfully combined into a myriad of themes and chapters that inspire to become leaders in the industry. So it's my pleasure to assist Mayor Hannah in presenting this award to you guys that reads, "The city of Norco hereby honors Jeffrey Court for creating beautiful living environments everywhere from its Norco headquarters while contributing to a healthy and diversified local economy." And Scott, sorry, your mic, our executive vice president, please come up and say a few words if you would.
Go ahead and say a few words.
Well, thank you. We're honored to be here. Being in the building we're in today for about 15 years is an honor to be here. We've lived in the community many years, and we're just happy to be able to employ people in the local economy and create a business that spreads across the country and across the world. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
If everybody will step out here in front, we'll get our picture. Okay, next item on the agenda is the city council communications, reports on regional boards and commissions. We'll let Mayor Protem Bash start with his first.
Well, I went to a lot of stuff, and not really anything to report, except the parade of lights was fantastic. I thought that everybody had a great time, and it was pretty good. And, you know, just so you know, for people, you guys don't have to stay, just so you know, just so if you decide you have to leave, you don't have a problem, just make sure you knew that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Happy to have you, though.
Thank you. Councilmember Grunmeyer.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Well, I'm going to reiterate what Mayor Protem Bash said. Excellent job, Brian, by your staff, and by all the volunteers at Park and Recs, along with the public works, and Chad's not here, the job they did for the Christmas festival and parade. Excellent, and good turnout, even the weather even helped us out a little bit. But also, for those that don't know, give big kudos to the staff at the senior center for the Christmas dinner. Thank you to the Lions Club and to the Rotary for helping out over there, appreciate it, and all the council members that help serve. But I'm going to give kudos to this man right here, and I know his head's small enough, big enough it is, but I think he did an excellent job on the Pearl Harbor Day Remembrance Ceremony at the Navy Base there, along with all the staff members that also helped, and the LNCF and that, all those that participated in the Veterans Committee. I'd tell you, Kevin, it was one of the better ones that I have attended, and it's sad to say that even though we only had Eugene there, he's 101, Navy veteran from World War II, it's amazing, and I want to thank all the, and I know some young people here, they weren't there, but I'll tell you, there were some young students there from junior ROTC, the Sea Cadets, along with Cal Baptist University. They learned history, and I thank you, Kevin, and your group for continuing that, and their remembrance of Pearl Harbor. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Newton.
There you have it.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing important there.
Better do better next time.
Okay, well, I can do a little better right now. I'll let all Robyn's students know that you guys don't need to stay either, and you can still get credit.
Okay, there's a list of proposed and current projects in our area right now from our CTC. At our meeting last week, we talked about prospective funding for all of these. Some of them have been funded, some of them are partially funded, some of them are going to be on the waiting list for a while, but as soon as there's funding, some of those things that will begin to happen. And the ones in the green, I believe, are happening right now, or they're getting ready, ready to happen on that. And then the construction project on the I-15 express lanes, it's just continuing right Every day, you see the people working. Now, we got the vector report. A gentleman there, that's in Brazil, he's throwing out mosquitoes to help fight mosquitoes that have that dengue virus, and that dengue virus is one of the worst viruses you can get from a mosquito. It gives you real high fever, your bones ache, you quit moving. Some people survive, a lot of them don't. So they're starting out to experiment there in Brazil, and I believe there has been some dengue mosquitoes in the United States. We don't know if they come in in some of the packages and boxes that are shipped in, or how they get here, but it seems like we get all of them that the rest of the countries And that poor little guy there, I wish somebody'd buy some fly spray for him, but even the wintertime, he don't get a relief. An RTA, every year, our little division over here in these four cities, we have Santa Bus, and Ike Boozman, he used to be the mayor at Eastvale, he loves playing Santa, and he does it for about 45 days straight before Christmas. So this year, instead of everybody riding the bus over to the MetroLink station, we all met over there, and we greeted people getting off of the trains, catching the buses to go home or go to the festival of lights, and we passed them out, we passed out candy canes to them, and we got there about 4 o'clock, and that's when the rush hour hit with all the passengers changing transportation. It was quite a sight. There's part of it there, we're passing out candy canes. And coming up, this is a yearly deal, and started doing it about three years ago, during the holidays, you see, from December 21st to January 12th, students or youths who have a ID card from kindergarten through grade 12, they can ride the bus anywhere they want to, 24/7, for 25 cents each way. So it's a pretty good deal, and in the summertime, we do the same thing, and I think this last summer, they had 190-something thousand kids that rode the bus. They ride to Disneyland, ride to the beach, ride anywhere they want to go that RTA goes to. So it's quite a deal if you've got kids and don't want to play taxi, just give them a pocket full of quarters and tell them to, you'll see them when you see them. I think that's all I have. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the city council consent items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion, to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items be removed from the consent counter. Items removed from the consent counter will be separately considered under item 3 of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull any of the items?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull 2C.
Anyone else?
Motion to protest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the remainder. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Okay, we will move to item 3 to discuss the 2C that was pulled by Councilmember Grunmeyer.
I'd like to appeal item 3A on the planning commission meeting.
Okay.
This may be a John question. I'm pulling a consent item, can you make an alternate motion?
I don't know what the question is exactly, but when you pull a consent calendar item, that means you discuss it without acting on it in the consent calendar. So to the extent that there is any action related to it, yes. And normally, actually, we don't require seconds for appeals, and if a council member has a right to. But I'm not sure.
Okay. I guess it's more to Councilmember Grunmeyer's appealing it. What's that action?
Just that.
Just to appeal it and reschedule it?
Yeah, she doesn't need a second.
For a future?
No, she doesn't need a second.
For a future.
Yeah.
But to stay with council?
And obviously, you can't discuss it. No, it's appealed to the council. I mean, it's no different than if the applicant had appealed it.
So it'll come up at a future date?
Right. That part, again, I'm just curious to a substitute motion to that, if you can do that.
I suppose, yeah.
But I guess my substitute motion would be, I understand Robyn saying, let's get it back to council. My substitute motion would be to tell the planning commission, since I think some of these items should have been worked out at planning, instead of coming back to council, tell planning commission to rework it and work it out.
The answer to that question is, if you make a motion to send this back to a planning commission, you can do that.
Since this Robyn's, I'm not going to cross it, I just wondered if it was permissible.
I would be open to that. I agree with you, the fact that some of the reasons listed in the minutes, as per the denial, are easily worked out in conditions.
Just in that part of my concern.
But I don't want to go too far into discussion and violate anything, so.
I was at the planning commission meeting. Obviously, members of the planning commission discussed these issues, and they couldn't come to an agreement. And I think the city council should be now looking at the items, and hopefully resolve those items that the planning commission couldn't come to an agreement on.
Okay. Then I'm not making any substitute motion, then.
Okay, so we're going to appeal it, it'll come back to the council, right, John?
Yeah.
Okay, we still got to vote on this.
Please vote.
Vote on this item. I did.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Don't confuse me, man. All right, item 4 is the public comments. This is the time when persons in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so that you may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the city council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters of the time such matters are made. The city council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. Do we have any cards?
Yes, one speaker card, Mike Williams.
I better turn the microphone so he don't yell at me. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, guests, appreciate the few minutes here. Robyn, by the way, John says hi, I had to go all the way to Las Vegas to see him, so. Just a couple of things. First off, I've got a friend of mine and his wife that moved here to town a little bit over a year ago. A man's trying to do a room addition on his property. I will not tell you his name, I will offline, because a few of you will know who it is. He can't get his permits approved. He's a very easygoing, down-to-earth guy, and doesn't want to cause a ruckus, but he finally asked me my opinion. I won't share that either, but I thought I'd let you know that this is going on, and I think a year that it's taken, and he can't get approval on these permits, he's had them professionally done according to him, coming back with excuses like, well, the lines aren't dark enough, or we have to send this back out to somebody else who's looking at it. I don't know the protocols here, but I'm sure you all do, and maybe you can take a look at this, or maybe you can visit me offline, I'll tell you who it is, and possibly you can help this man, because I know you'd rather do that than kick him to the curb and have him do something that everybody would be upset about. The other thing is that this has been well-publicized, so I thought I'd put it out there and clear the air. Everybody is pretty much aware of a wild horse that was running around in the San Ana Riverbed over the last several months, operation by the name of True Innocence Equine Rescue, put the paperwork on this horse. It was trapped by the AC of Riverside County. He came up into a holding yard, and they recognized that he kept coming back up there, so they put panels up, and they baited him, and it worked, and they got him. And I had gotten a couple of phone calls from them on this horse, and they asked me to take a look at him, and I saw him before he came out of the riverbed, had a good time following him, it was a lot of fun. They asked me if I wanted him as a foster, and I went down and saw that horse, and most of you know I'm pretty heavy into horses and mules, and it's really the first time I ever looked at a horse and almost cried. He's been beaten up horribly. He's gelding, maybe nine, 10 years old, a little buckskin guy. So I agreed to take him, so he is being fostered on my property, and I'm going to try and bring him back and see if we can get him to like people again. But I just wanted everybody to know, I do not own this horse. He is a foster, and he belongs to TIR, they do control him. So, but hopefully, we can bring this little guy along and bring him back to being a good citizen and have people love him and him love them again. So, thank you, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone, appreciate the time. Thank you, and good luck with your horse. Any more cards?
There's no further speaker cards.
That's all of our cards. Go down to item 5. City council successor agent discussion items. Order of presentation for discussion items, staff report presentation, council questions of staff, public speakers in favor, against, or neutral. Council discussion and action. Item A is approval of fiscal year 2020-21 recognized obligation payment schedule, including administrative budget with our interim finance director.
Hello, good evening. So we have here from the successor agency, Norco Community Redevelopment Agency. It was formed to administer and enforce all obligations otherwise and otherwise unwind the former affairs of the Norco Community RDA, that was the former agency before dissolution. We're here to review and approve, it's subject to review and approval by the seven-member oversight board. Until June 30th, 2018, each successor agency had a local oversight board that served this purpose, and as of July 1st, it has now, all local oversight boards have been replaced and consolidated by a countywide oversight board, as part of streamlining and winding down the redevelopment affairs. So we have here the recognized obligation payment schedule that sets forth the minimum payment amounts and due dates for the payments required by enforceable obligations for each fiscal year. In accordance with the dissolution act, we are, the successor agency to the Norco Community Redevelopment Agency has prepared the payment schedule for fiscal year 20-2021, covering the enforceable obligations for the period July 1st, 2020 through June 30, 2021. We're presenting the schedule to the countywide oversight board for consideration and approval at its January 16th meeting. Following approval by the oversight board, the successor agency must also submit a copy of the payment schedule to the county auditor controller, the state comptroller's office, and also the Department of Finance by February 1st of 2020. So we're recommending that we adopt the successor agency resolution approving the recognized obligation payment schedule and the administrative budget for fiscal year 2021.
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question. Liz, that is, our total obligation for the 2021 year is 6.7 million, is that what it's going to be?
Yes, so out of that, 6,553,564 is the debt service payments, and 250,000 is administrative cost for the fiscal year.
So when we gave it to an account, he took it over, they get to administer it, and they get the money, we don't. Okay. I just, so I figured.
Yeah, there's also the, it also has the unfunded pension and retirement liability that we're claiming of 108,000, 258, and as well as the educational revenue recognition loan of 375. The unfunded, it's still under litigation with the Department of Finance.
Okay.
But we're still including it on here.
So it could be more or less, is what you're saying, or if they figure that out?
Well, it's still under litigation, so as of right now, we're requesting to include that.
To include it, okay. So it could go down if they, or, yeah, it's a whole different world. Thank you, Liz, I appreciate that.
Anyone else up here have any questions? Wait a minute, we got to ask if we have any cards?
There are no speaker cards.
No cards? Okay, all right, we'll bring it back to council. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
All right, the next item is the public hearing, it's item 6. Is order of public hearing, is staff presentation, council questions of staff, open the public hearing, public speakers in favor, against, or neutral. Close the public hearing, council discussion and action. So this first one is ordinance number 1056, first reading, and it'll be our public works director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to clarify a clerical issue that occurred. We just realized an hour before the council meeting that what you got wasn't the redline version of the ordinance, it was the completed version. It was the completed version. There were still some areas that highlighted red, but you actually got the version that shows all the changes. So what I printed out for you is actually the redline version that shows you all the changes. So, and I will defer to the council as far as if you'd like to go through each of them and review them. Majority of the one, of them, of any substance were the ones that actually were highlighted in red in your original packet. Those are the, some of the key ones that are related to the SB 998, but I do want to clarify at the beginning why you got that packet now is because we just realized somehow you guys got the approved unedited, or edited, unedited version, so we're giving that now. But let me give a, jump in there and provide a brief statement about this requirement. Basically, in September 2018, Governor Brown signed into law SB 998, known as the Water Shut Off Protection Act, which changes the requirements and procedures relative to discontinuation of residential water service for non-payment beginning February 1st, 2020. In essence, what it is is a culmination of different requirements. The big picture is, is that, in short, is that basically you can, you have to wait 60 days total before you physically can shut somebody off. And it lays out those requirements of what you're supposed to do and how you're supposed to do that. Primarily, it's about notification, that you're supposed to give notification to residential customers a certain minimum time. The minimum timeframe is seven days, so they have to have notice at least seven days before that. And then once that's done, then you can technically shut them off from the 60 days. For our timeframe and it's what we're establishing in our ordinance is clarity about when that timeframe starts. It always starts on the initial bill in question. In this case, it's the date it's mailed to you. That starts the clock. So until 60 days has occurred, and normally would occur in that process, so you understand as you get your original bill, you'll get a second bill that has your next month's bill plus the past due, and then you'll get your actual shut-off notice. We actually have a system set up where we have been providing shut-off notice 14 days before we actually shut someone off. And then we actually give a reminder phone call the day before, reminding that you will be shut off, you know, give the reminder because some folks forget. So our process is already well within the requirements, but our timeline was actually about 45 days. So we're just shifting our schedule to say, to keep the process where we'll do it 14 days before actual shut-off. We've just established our dates now to be in the calendar days, 60 days. So we, so our goal of the ordinance was, and all agencies providing water had to adopt a policy or modify their ordinance that establishes particular guidelines that the state law requires. So all these edits in there, most of them are related to SB 998. We did some housekeeping items where we adjusted some minor things such as we changed the, instead of finance officer, it's now finance director. So just some things we took, since we're changing the ordinance, we took some small editorial changes in there, but most of them are related to SB 998. SB 998 does have two different clarifications on customers. All customers are afforded the right to have 60 days before they're shut off and proper notification. So that's established in our ordinance with these edits. In addition to that, there is another special criteria classification of customer. If they meet a certain criteria, that they also can't get shut off. It's a little interesting because it's still establishes the 60 days, but gives them extra criteria how they can qualify. Basically, this extra classification or group is if they have a pre-existing medical condition that can be documented where they have to have the water on for medical reasons. They also have to be within a certain public assistance group that's classified and identified in the, in the public code, and we've added that. There's various organizations or groups, state groups that provide assistance, and they have to be willing to get on a payment plan or other options to keep their bill current. If they meet all that criteria, technically we can't shut off their, their water either. But frankly, we actually give that consideration to all our customers where they can get on a payment plan so they're not shut off. So everybody's covered the same way in actuality, but we do outline that specific requirement because it is a right so that customers can read that, that they have that requirement. But in reality, we've made it so all our customers can get on a payment plan that is developed and determined by the finance department. So everybody's eligible for that. So in essence, we've made everybody equal regardless whether you're getting special assistance or not. And normally, again, we've already had a policy where if you had a medical condition that was related and needing water service on, we wouldn't turn you off anyway. We would try to work with you and develop that issue because it's a health and safety issue for a person. So primarily, the ordinance is adding the specific requirements mainly regarding mailing, what information has to be in that mailer that basically indicates, you know, the residents' rights related to this law and how they can try to request some of those considerations like a payment plan or appealing a decision about turning water service on. There is an appeal process. It's really not useful because an appeal is really based off that there's an error in your bill, that something wasn't, wasn't right. It was over, an overread or something was incorrect. That's a justification to maybe have your bill reviewed. I mean, so when somebody appeals that decision to turn off a water, it would be a pretty quick appeal process by staff because it's, unless there's a shown error in the bill, there's really nothing to appeal because it's, you're only being shut off because of non-payment. We would use the other aspects of trying to keep them on like, again, getting them on an affordable payment plan that allows them to keep their water service on. So what this order does includes and all the requirements and components that the state requires in the law. It has been reviewed extensively by staff. It's been reviewed by the city attorney. And at this point, I'm happy to go through each of those individual ones with you based off of the revised document we just got, or if you have questions on the document you originally got, which highlighted some of the areas, but not all that were changed.
Okay, so does council have any questions?
I do, Mayor.
Okay.
Evening, Chad.
Hello, sir.
I don't care to go over the second ordinance. Again, I read the first one. Just since I know basically our policy is that we work with people, what, where we report annually, what is our annual discon- mutations on water service?
There is a good point that I didn't identify. One of the requirements of the state is that we will begin to start, report annually the number of discontinuations of service or disconnections to the state. We have the ability to track those now because of our lucid software, so now we can do that. Where in previous years, we wouldn't have really effectively been able to do it, but now we can easily track that and we report that to the state. So compliance-wise, we can do that very easily. I don't have an actual number of how many we have. I didn't actually look that up prior to a meeting, but we do quite a few every week. I'd say probably on average, 10 to 15.
Lizette, would you know, other than quite a few?
Yeah, so like this morning, it was 38 for this week's. Other weeks, usually like 20, 25, depending on the group.
Is that fairly consistent throughout the year?
Yes, for each group, they're consistent.
Usually the same customers, commonly.
Okay.
A lot of repeats, some new, but a lot of repeats, you know.
And there's three groups?
Four groups.
Four billings?
Yes.
On that? Okay. That's all I had. Thanks, Chad.
Yes, sir.
So Chad, out of these groups, like you said, there's 38 this morning. Now, is that 38 already been the 60 days?
Currently, we have it set up for 45 days.
45?
Yes, because we, we have where their payment is due 38 days from, it actually ranges from 25 to 33 days, their due date. And so now if we move the due date to the day it's mailed, we will be in compliance with the 60 days.
Okay, and so then by then, they get all three bills, correct?
Like currently get three bills now, and this, if approved, and it's mandatory that we have this on record, the, we're not required to have this in place until February 1st. So between now, which we've already been working on, we're going to be updating our utility bill, the information that's included with that bill as far as customer rights and information, adding a lot of information to our website that's required. So there's a lot of work we're still going to do based off of the approval of this ordinance to make sure by February 1st, from that point forward, we are billing and only shutting off folks at a 60-day period. So we're in compliance. Right now, we're currently still doing it as we actively have, which is normally a 45-day period, but by February 1st or before, our goal is, is to be already operating in that 60-day requirement.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
On the 38 that was sent out today, as in the 38 are scheduled for disconnect if they don't pay. Don't most of them come in like tomorrow?
No, those, that was the number of actual shut-offs sent to the field today.
And Lizette, was that for one group?
One group.
Okay. And Mayor, if I can continue?
Yes.
It is the Christmas holiday, so they told us they need presents to buy.
Okay. And only because this caught me, and I was thinking 2025 residents, you're saying in a per group, not just, that's not what you get per month. So yours, that's almost 80 to 100 repayers.
So each group is about, about 2,000 that we have customers.
Okay, so that's one, that's less 1%. Well, it's about 1%.
On average, it's less than 2% overall annually.
But that's still about 200 people and, and I know, because for some reason, my mail got lost, but I, I got one of those pink notices and I walked in and paid it, but I'm looking at this and thinking, that's a lot of people. That's a monthly that we're tracking and, you know, the cost recovery on this and the penalties. So this is something, and I just don't want it to get to a point you start, you're going to extend, Chad, so our cutoff time from the 48 days, 45 days to the 60 days. So your staff is going to incur less cost because you're shortening, you're lengthening the time period, correct?
No, it won't change anything staff-wise. It just gives them a longer period. We're still basically be doing shut-offs at the same pace. It's just expanded window. It won't decrease the number of shut-offs that we do, honestly.
So how about you, Lizette? Is it going to cost your staff more time or is it, I'm just trying to make it so we're not incurring extra cost?
No, but it would still be the same process. The main difference is that you're now basically, when you get your bill, you know how some agencies have due upon receipt? It's, that's the main difference on our bill.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question, and I'm not sure who can answer it. So if we have to start reporting to the state the number of disconnects, if it's the same people all the time, do they count multiple times or are they only going to count once?
It's every disconnect you do, however many times a customer has 10 in a year, that's we report they get 10 times.
And it's reported to the state for what intent or purposes?
We don't know. It's just a requirement that each agency must identify the number of disconnects on an annual basis.
With no reasoning for collecting the data?
Not sure what they're going to use that for as far as overall purpose. It was never specified. It just says in the, in the law that they now must report all the disconnections you do on an annual basis.
I'll just state for the record, that makes me super nervous that we're having to report that with no intent or purpose.
Keep in mind, this is a new law and the whole goal behind this new law is the state recognizing that water is important to residents, right? So they want to give them additional time to pay as well as additional options to pay their bill. I suspect by tracking that, it will give them a way to measure how effective this legislation is of, given, given people the options whether it's working or not working. That's the only thing I can think of.
Well, since there's no prior data, though, they have nothing to compare if this law's even working, so.
Remember, we're talking about the state council.
Well, and that's why I'm nervous because I'm worried that, you know, if it's based on a percentage of your customers, there could be penalties down the line depending on whether this law works the way they want it to or not. So it makes me extremely nervous.
Or maybe the state would say, boy, there's so many, let's help subsidize this and so we'll send the city's money.
Yeah.
That's what's going to happen.
Don't think so.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing and any cards on the subject?
There are no speaker cards received.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and action. Anybody want to start? Ted?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1056 for the first reading.
Okay. That's yours, Mr.?
I need a second.
There's a second.
An ordinance of the city council, the city of Norco, amending chapter 14.04 Water System of the Norco Municipal Code to Comply with SB 998, Code Amendment 2019-07.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you. All right, item seven is City Council, City Manager, Staff Communications. Andy, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, I'd like to take this opportunity to update you on the refunding of the 2009 water and sewer enterprise revenue bond. As you recall, you approved this refunding transaction on November 9th. The purpose of that refunding was to essentially do two things, reduce interest costs on the existing 2009 bonds as well as generate new monies to do water projects. I'm happy to report that that refinance and transaction successfully closed today and we achieved a lot better results than what we anticipated when we brought that to you back on November 9th. First and foremost, we told you we were going to be seeking a re-review of the water and sewer bond credit rating from Standard and Poor's. We did go through that process, made extensive presentation to Standard and Poor's following their review of the water and sewer bonds credit rating. They did upgrade the credit from single A to double A minus. That is actually a two-step credit upgrade for those bonds. Then the bonds were marketed, they went to market on December 4th and was very favorably received by the market. Almost all major Wall Street investment company were interested in purchasing these bonds to the extent that the bonds were oversubscribed six times. So there were six people wanting to buy the bond to every one, one bond we really had available to sell. So the advantage of that to us, of course, is it gave us the opportunity to negotiate the interest rates even lower. So when we made our presentation to you on November 3rd, we told you the true interest cost was expected to be around 3.03%. When the bonds actually sold, we ended up selling the bonds at 2.63%, that's 40 business points savings for the city. In terms of how that translates into dollars, when we brought this to you on November 9th, we anticipated that because we were lowering the interest rates, we will save $9.1 million over 20 years in today's dollars. What we ended up realizing was a $10.4 million savings on the refunding of the bonds. Obviously, there were several factors that we applied here that helped us. First and foremost, of course, is the overall interest rate environment, which is fairly very low. The fact that we were able to get a credit rating upgrade on the bonds, that helped significantly. Also, the current financial condition of the water and sewer funds, which has improved since the city council did vote to adjust the rates so that we have better debt coverage ratios for those bonds. And also the city's population that remains very stable and the economic environment here in the city of Norco. So again, these savings, they will have favorable impact on the rates in the future. Obviously, I'm not going to sit here and say that the rates would never go- Obviously, I'm not going to sit here and say that the rates will never go up again, but the reality of it, when you're saving over half a million dollars a year compared to what we are paying right now, is going to have a significant favorable impact on the water and sewer rates. But I do like to thank city staff who worked on this. Throughout this process, we had reviewed thousands of pages of documents, prepared many, many schedules that were reviewed. I also do want to thank the city council for having the wisdom to approve the rates when we made those rate adjustments about two and a half years ago. I think it's put the city in a very favorable situation. But bonds sold, everything is closed.
Thank you, Andy. That's really good news. Thank you, staff, for all the work you did on that. All right, Mr. Bash?
Nothing.
Mr. Hoffman?
I'm here to report as a member of the NART team, that NART will be participating in the Equafest up in LA, that's part of the Rose Parade, equestrian group, we will be doing a standby there for that. And that was a courtesy, that was a request by the Rose Parade people to be part of it. Also, we'll have a crew during the Rose Parade, like we did last year up there, so they do respect what we do and that, so we, kudos to the team and the members and all that work. Brian, thank you for your work on that. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, but hopefully, the lieutenant will tell us what he's going to do, or at least have plans for New Year's Eve to keep our revelers within some kind of check. Thank you.
Yeah, I was actually going to cover that. So for New Year's Eve, we will have extra staffing out for our fireworks enforcement, just similar to the 4th of July enforcement that we did with, in conjunction with code enforcement and animal control that evening, so you will see extra staffing out, patrolling streets that evening. Other than that, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Chief.
Nothing to report, and happy holidays.
Finance Director?
I want to say Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year.
Thank you, same to you. Brian?
We're receiving quite a few power outages, particularly on the west side of town, and kind of an all-day thing. I just got notice that some areas are starting to be restored, but we do have a section out around Corridon that's not expected to come back on to about 4:30 this morning, coming morning. So not sure exactly why, equipment failure is what I, my note says at this point in time, but other than that, have a happy holiday.
We have now Chevy Chase come to live in here, and doing his Christmas party lights. All right.
Steve, I don't have nothing to report, so Chad, I'll get you there.
Uh, nothing to report, but just, other than Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, thank you.
Thank you. Mark? Madam Clerk?
Nothing to report, just Happy Holidays, everybody.
Mr. Newton?
Merry Christmas.
Mrs. Grunmeyer? Nothing. Mr. Attorney? Okay, well, I'm going to say Merry Christmas, but I've got a question for you, Brian. How's the situation with our security system in City Hall coming along?
We just completed the design elements, and we have received our proposal for that. We've reviewed it with all the departments. We're starting our first phase, which includes cameras, full upgrade to the sheriff department system, and that will be coming before you to award to our consulting team, our Stanley Security, who does all of our security systems in cities. So that'll be coming before you at your next meeting. But right now, we're looking really good. The second part of that is the architectural for the counter improvements and the restrictions. So we're working with each department a little bit on what will work with them in regards to no intrusion over the counters and that type of thing. So we'll be looking at that, that'll come back to you as part of our second phase of that. We hope to start work on that end, if approved in January, then what we'll do is probably come back and start work as soon as possibly late February.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that, I'll say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and we're adjourned.